Welcome, I'm Tim Skagans, Chairman of the Shasberry Select Board, and I'm calling this meeting of the Shasberry Select Board to order at 6:30 on Tuesday, January 29, 2018. First, I need to check, do any members of the Board have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
None.
No. First up, approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes that were circulated. We have minutes for January 2nd, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Art.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any additions or corrections?
Can Ken second it when he wasn't here?
Anyway, second, Ken was here.
Oh, he was here, I'm sorry.
And, yeah, I think he can.
He just probably can't vote on it.
It would, um, yeah. He actually can, I think it's just better if he, uh...
Stays. Okay. I didn't say anything wrong.
All good? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes for January 2nd as circulated, say aye.
Aye. You have to understand.
So, those minutes are approved.
The next one, okay.
400. I forgot my pen. And then we have, uh, oh, thank you. Minutes for January 2nd that were circulated, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Art.
Sixteen, David.
Seconded by Joe, uh, let's see, on the sixteenth. Tim and Ken were absent, so we need three people here to approve those minutes, so we're gonna have to postpone those.
Sure.
Okay, do you have any warrants?
No warrants.
What?
No warrants.
Always gotta spend money.
Not a way to win. You said you want that.
Saved us money.
Wow. I don't think that's ever happened before. Okay, uh, any announcements? I would remind the folks playing along at home that we are still looking for planning commissioners and members of the Developmental Review Board. Are there any public comments?
Yes, I do. Would you like me to stand here or come forward?
Best if you come up here.
I've got a special seat for you.
You've got a microphone, a comfy chair, and everything.
Thank you. And I realize this is gonna be talked about later on, so, but, just being a public comment, um, we'll bring it forth now and you can decide how you wanna talk about it. Um, I would like to request that the Select Board amend the draft 2018 meeting warning, specifically number two, letter C, giving disclosure to elected officials actual compensation. The correct number should read forty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-eight, as you are now setting a precedence of extending health insurance to an elected official, contrary to your personnel policy, section 2-2, number 1.
So I'll have to think about that and talk about it when this comes out.
Yep.
We don't, we don't disclose, when we're talking about what the employees are paid and all that sort of stuff, it's by...
Yeah, the payment is public record, uh, you don't discuss out loud, um, performance reviews.
Or, or, I think what you're referring to, Holly, is that...
It's a change in salary structure. Last year, you brought it, um, transparently to the public, so they could vote. This year, you've changed the structure. You've, you've added insurance, but it changes the compensation to be, um, it won't be thirty as reflected here.
But, but we also give insurance to all employees, the town crew and that sort of stuff, and so, what I'm saying is that we don't disclose that, or we don't say that that's part of their salary, although it is, but we, we show how much they get paid per hour, and then there's health insurance on top of it, and it changes for different ones, so, that's the rest of it.
And I did ask BLC to go for a legal opinion on this.
Okay.
And, uh, it was perfectly fine to set the conversation with a town official by including the amount as a line item in the budget, rather than putting it in as a standalone article in the warning. Uh, the law on compensation for the county clerk is what we passed last year, which is we collect the fees and pay the salary.
Yeah.
It's the Board's, uh, decision on how they wanna do that.
Okay.
Dave's point is well taken, it is a line item in the budget, which is public record.
And, and here's a copy of your personnel for employees, not elected officials. We seem to be... When putting a warning out, um, 2642, number 2, it shall be separate articles specifically indicating the business to be transacted to include the office in the question to be voted upon. Now, the question being, that, as an elected official is funded by the townspeople, vote or not, choose to or not, I disagree that you should not put the total compensation that the town people are going to be funding this position. So, but you can, let's, I ask, I'm requesting that the Select Board amend the draft 2018 meeting warning to reflect the true disclosure of what the elected official will be compensated. Yeah, I'll just give you this, so you can reflect it in minutes, thanks.
Any other public comments?
I don't know.
Okay. All right, uh, item six is the road report. Dave, did you wanna say anything?
Uh, I really don't have, uh, much on the road report, except I do have the highway certification here tonight, that, uh, the mileage has not changed, this is a procedural thing for state funding, uh, just the Board certifies that these are the correct mileages and, and nothing's changed this year from last year.
So, uh, is there a motion to approve the certificate of highway mileage, the year ending February 10, 2018, indicating that we have, uh, zero miles of Class 1, roughly 20 miles of Class 2, 50 miles of Class 3, 16 miles of Class of State Highway, totaling 86 miles? We also show 1.7 miles of Class 4 and 3.35 miles of legal trail.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Art.
Second.
Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, the certificate of highway mileage is approved by a vote, a vote of 400.
Mr. Moffett didn't want his driveway in there.
So we do have, uh, the crews out trying to fix some of the potholes, uh, as they can around town, uh, that's been most of today, probably tomorrow before it freezes up again, 'cause we have a pretty good freeze coming. Uh, Meyer, snow tomorrow, but I don't know if it's gonna be dusting or not.
All right, next up is...
Tim, um, that's kinda dragged my memory list. I had talked to Dave about this before, but I think, at some point, we should dig out the, uh, rules, regulations for taking over a new town road, and kinda go over some of the, what they got, just specs in there. Because you got, uh, Birch Hill on the north end of town, and I do believe, just, it's an eyeball measure, but I think that hill is a lot steeper than it should've been, had been taken over, number one. You've got Blueberry Hill, that we went up there, I think it was last summer, and there should be more culverts on that hill than there weren't, so I think we oughta have that slate, maybe before the town takes a road over, have an engineer design, or check it out, to make sure there's ample culverts, and the grade is right, and all that, because it can cost the town a pile of money.
But those are, those are our rules.
Yes.
Right, but there's, there's some of them in there that's not right. There should be more culverts on Blueberry Hill than there are.
We should've been more diligent before we took them over.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Oh, okay, well...
If you're, if you're building out town, you're gonna have a problem.
Check the rules so that we don't do that again.
Right, exactly, that's what I'm saying.
Yep.
Just kinda check them out, and make sure, because that was, I know there was no engineers having designed the road, but the contract can put that in, put the culvert in.
Mm-hmm. Okay, good idea.
Because, like I say, it can cost us a lot of money.
Are there any engineers locally around here, or is that...
Well, any new road would be in a development type, and the whole thing would have to be reviewed by all of us, and a short ride would definitely go towards, uh, steepness of the road, which is, you know, there's beachhand policies for this, it shouldn't be steeper in the culverts.
Yeah.
So we do have a lot of review, uh, of any new project.
Yep.
Okay. Your highway cert?
Thank you.
The budget. So, we talked a lot about this, uh, these are the final numbers, Dave and I have finally nailed them down. Basic, uh, background here is that revenues and expenses are both up about 2%. Uh, we are gonna need, uh, that, which does more or less balance, but we are gonna need a, about a one cent tax increase to cover the one cent that we did, that was covered by budget surplus last year. Remind me what the, the big changes are, uh, we, we added money for trees, we added money to Bennington Rescue Squad.
Bennington Res...
We added money, as was pointed out, for, uh, town clerk, uh, health insurance.
Which is offset by the revenues that are coming in for the town clerk also. The, uh, the major differences were, were those trees, Bennington Rescue, those are the two big ones wanting to take down more trees. The actual numerical difference between year to year is quite small, um, and the, the tax rate at the end of this, uh, is actually less than 1% higher than the tax rate of fiscal 16, so we can't really get much closer than that.
Yeah, I wanted to also show the, uh, something that I'm including in the Select Board report, which shows budget trends, expenses and revenue, going back to 2016, and you can see that we're just getting back up to where we were in 2016, in terms of, uh, budget expense, budgeted expenses, it's turned out we actually came in well under back, uh, back that year. So, all things considered, it's basically four years of flat spending.
And we have been able to, uh, keep the, uh, public approved up to 15% of the budget to be kept in, in the general fund as a reserve, and we have that right down to where it should be now, it's at 221, and would max out around 240, so we're in a good position there also. And we've kept it as tight as can be. As I said, it's, it's a minor increase from last year, but over the four-year trend, it's, uh, it's well below even the inflation rate for the last four years, or projecting out to the fourth year, which is fiscal 19.
Right, right. And during that time, as I've mentioned before, we've, we've made some, some good changes. We've established that we're doing a, a professional audit of our finances every year now. We've made major improvements at parks, including putting a new surface on the tennis court.
New well.
New wells in the parks.
New well in the park.
We've also been purchasing equipment, uh, for cash instead of borrowing money.
That's right, that's the one Ken likes, is that we're, uh, we've got a sinking fund for all our highway equipment now, so that gets saved for instead of getting purchased with debt now.
We're on target to replace the first fire truck with the money we put aside, and, uh, the next highway vehicle, several highway vehicles, so, we're on target to be in a position not to have to borrow money for any of these projects, uh, and the overall expenses have been keeping down pretty, pretty fine.
Well, in Shasberry Hollow, you were able to get that problem solved for under budget.
Under budget for Shasberry Hollow, we are still seeking grants to do some more work out there. We actually have quite a number of grants to use in fiscal 18 and 19, uh, for different projects around town, so, overall, uh, we've held the line on everything, and it's reflected in the smallest tax, the only tax increase we've had in the last several years, and, as I said, overall, the tax rate in 19 is less than 1% higher than the tax rate of 16.
Plus, you got the new garage.
And we were going to, I almost forgot, and we're going to do a garage.
That detail, yeah.
Small detail.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, yeah, we did all that and built a garage. Good.
Usually somebody sort of reminds us.
Uh, I just also would just point out to the Selectmen that, uh, I added one other little bit to the, to the budget report, to the budget report by the Select Board in the Town Report, which is just this budget summary that appears at the top of the spreadsheet that we've been looking at, uh, lately, just to, to give a little bit more detail. And I would mention for the, the folks at home that, um, you'll be getting notice soon that the Town Report is going, is available, it's, it's almost ready for, for release, uh, we'll be sending a postcard to everyone, we'll be putting it up on our website, and that the Town Report itself, we have tried to cut it back and just eliminate a lot of the, the spreadsheet information that was taking up a lot of pages, uh, replaced that with charts where appropriate, uh, a lot of the phone directories are gone, 'cause the Town Hall has one phone number now, so that's, that's really not necessary. Uh, but all of that financial information is still in the public record, and it will be on the website, so if you want to see every line of the 500-line budget spreadsheet, it'll be on the, on the website, and if you want a printed copy of it, just ask us and we'll make one available to you.
So what's the postcard gonna, that the citizens receive, what's it gonna say?
Well, we were just talking about that, and we probably oughta talk some more about it.
Yeah, essentially, it'll make notification that the Town Report is available online at shasberrybt.gov, and that printed copies will be available at Coal Hall, uh, the exact date we haven't set yet, some towns are doing it on the 20th, some are doing it on the 24th, some are the 15th, so, it depends on, after I talk to our printer, what date that we'll set for that. The postcards will be out at the end of this week, as required, and then, uh, the, the online version will be quicker than the printed version, but you'll be able to pick up a printed version no later than the 20th.
And what I'm gonna suggest we do on the postcard is mention the way we're doing it, which is we're printing it in sections with the main Town Report, which is about 20 or 30 pages, the reports from community appropriations, the reports of how they spent their money last year, which is another 20 or 30 pages, and then the budget spreadsheet, which is about 15 pages. Just let them know that all three of those are available separately, and they can choose which ones they want, 'cause I would like to get some sense of how much printing we need to do. We've decided that this year we'll just print 200 copies of everything to start, and if we need more, we'll print more.
True.
But if nobody wants, you know, if there's 10 people that want the budget spreadsheet, next year we'll print 10 copies of it, save that money.
So this is more of a condensed version of what we had?
Um, yeah, it's essentially the same thing, uh, without the spreadsheets, really, and, uh, I threw out, uh, I took out some things like, um, phone numbers for people at the state, which people can get online, um, last year's, last March's election results, uh, which, you know, people know that by now, they don't need, we don't need to take up pages, print them out, that kind of stuff. So, yeah, it's a condensed version of what we had before, but it still includes reports from all the town officers, and, uh, reports from the community appropriations, uh, people, and, uh, and the budget spreadsheet, but I say, those are all in separate pieces, that people can choose which ones they want. And that and more information will be available online, we'll put the, uh, the financial audits that we've had for the last couple of years up online, so they'll be included there too. So I guess we need, uh, to formally approve the budget.
Yeah, we'll adopt the budget.
Yeah, so, the, the final budget is scheduled to be, um, 1,975,960 dollars, and that is assuming that all the community appropriations are approved.
Okay.
You will notice that in the warning, the, the number that we will ask the voters to approve at town meeting for the budget is this number right here.
That's right.
Minus those community appropriations, then these get added on, according to which get approved after that, but, almost always, most of them get approved, so we just assume that they'll all get approved for our budgeting.
I noticed it's up 10,000, is there, is that one, one particular thing significant, or a lot of them up a little bit?
Um, the, I'd say the main one is the, uh, the Caulfield Library.
Arlington?
Arlington Library.
The Park McCulloh Library doubled theirs from 10 to 20.
Oh, the Park McCulloh Library, thanks for correcting me, yes.
Yeah, they doubled their request from 10 to 20,000.
Okay, so that's...
That's pretty much, that's the bulk of it.
That's it right there, okay. All right. Okay.
So, so the motion, maybe it needs to be adjusted for us to go forward and, and put this in the, the warning, it's actually part of the warning, so as long as the Board agrees on the budget, yeah.
We should probably do what is in the warning, so, uh, so I need a motion to approve the budget with spending of 1,900,300 dollars.
So moved.
Moved by Ken.
Second.
Seconded by Art. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, the budget for FY19 is approved at the figure of 1,900,300 dollars. And then we need to approve the warning for the Town Meeting and Vote. And David and Marlene prepared this for us, which includes the, the usual stuff, um, indicates that there is two parts to Town Meeting, the, the meeting on Monday night and the voting the next day, uh, indicates a few things that we have just by tradition pulled out and voted on separately. Uh, it sets the date for when taxes are due, it sets the budget, it asks the, the people at Town Meeting to approve the budget at the number that we just specified, which does not include community appropriations, to transact any other businesses necessary. And then besides election of officers, uh, there were two items to go on the, on the ballot. There is the, um, the Renewable Energy Resolution that was, uh, has been suggested to a lot of towns in Vermont by the group, um, 350 Vermont, urging, uh, a move toward renewable energy, um, as we talked about before. This Board decided not to endorse the particular wording of this one, this, this resolution, because we were concerned with things like, uh, halt all fossil fuel infrastructure, which, uh, we thought could mean we would not let anybody open another gasoline station in town, which we're not quite ready to do that, but this Board did, in Board, endorse its own language, uh, endorsing renewable energy, and indicating our, our desire for the US economy to transition to renewable energy, and our willingness to accept, uh, wind and solar in our town. The other one is a, uh, the Taconic Community Grange is requesting another five-year tax, uh, tax property abatement exemption. And that's item two, and then the other items that would be on there would be, uh, oh, and then the, the community appropriations, all 25 of them totaling 75,600 dollars.
Tim, shouldn't they, uh, under tax categories there, shouldn't there be a statement of how much it's gonna cost the taxpayer if they approve the exemption?
The wording, uh, from the, uh, ballot application is what goes on in the warning. That question can be raised, or the Board can, can determine that amount and publicize it, uh, but on the ballot itself, it's just a question that was raised, and the question is the one that the people who signed the petition signed, which was that wording.
Did we check on any snafus for holidays or anything else around the time the taxes are due? That always ends up, this time the post office was closed.
Yes, we only checked those days.
Okay.
Yeah, it's always veterans say that.
We've had to change it in the...
Yeah, yeah.
In Town Meeting sometimes in the past.
It happens every seven years.
Oh, is it, okay.
It's a seven-year one.
Thank you, all right.
We come around every seven...
Like the locusts, huh? Okay.
Okay.
Hi, maybe I'm just not seeing it, is it small enough there? I didn't seem to see, show the town treasurer receive a stipend of 2,000, increased, and shall the town clerk receive an annual salary? Did I just miss that?
No, it's not on this version of this, and, uh, part of the discussion on this is, uh, there's two parts to the vote on this night, and most of these are duplicates. When you have the clerk and the treasurer in that section, you're also voting for them in the budget, because as you know, at Town Meeting, because we don't, Australian vote for the Town Budget, it's voted off the floor, any part of the budget can be amended by motion off the floor. So, we're kind of voting twice for these items, and to the point that you raised earlier of transparency, in the budget, if you go to the clerk's area, it clearly shows how much we're paying as salary, how much we're paying in medical contributions, and how much we're paying in beamers, which is far more detailed than you get from this one sentence here. And the, in the treasurer's area, you also have her salary there, which was also repeating what's on the front page here, so you can pass the budget in one vote and turn it down in this vote, and then what do you have? Which is the reason why I asked BLC attorneys, what were we obligated to do? And it turns out we're only obligated to have it in one place if you're voting Australian, if you're not voting Australian ballot, because this can come up on floor.
So, historically, the community has looked for them under section 1, and now it's, how are you going to, um, educate the voters in these, to these elected positions?
They are line items in the budget.
So, a person to be informed needs to scour the budget and, and look and see that way?
Um, yes, that's, uh, that's, as Dave said, one of the things that we're trying to do is avoid the duplicate voting. It's been going on in the past.
I understand, but in error on the side of transparency, it seems, at this time with such a change, it seems peculiar to me to remove it.
Well, I think one of the things that I was also trying to away from, if you recall, for 35 years, duty had a stipend, not, not a salary. Last year, when we converted to salary, we left it in this position, which may not have been the best way of doing it last year. We only should've gone into a salary box as a line item, because the town can pay for, uh, you have the option to pay her his salary, so, to the fact of the total compensation you're getting in transparency, I think it's, in just my opinion, I think it's easier if I just go to the town clerk page and follow sal... easier if I just go to the town clerk page and follow salary, medical benefits, beamers, which is the state insurance program, state retirement program, and then I can see the total of what we're talking about. If it's voted here, you have all kinds of interesting complications that everything would have to change, and it's neater if it's voted as a package inside the budget than on individual aspects of it out here. And they don't conflict either. That's what I'm concerned about, is the conflict between one being voted up and one being voted down. Then what, then what do you have?
These are elected positions, though. They're, the voice, the people should be fully aware of what they're supporting and give their yes or no. That's all. That's my opinion. And, and there's nowhere at a town vote where you have people come forward and ask questions for, I guess maybe you have the budget there so that you can explain it to them.
Might be not a great time to make. And I was thinking when you talked about the town report. I've always thought of the town report as a historical document. I have town reports back to the forties. I'm missing one year. And I don't know how many times I've referred back. And I think when you, even talking about, um, elections, I've often gone back and looked, for some reason, to those things. And down the road thirty years from now, someone wanted to know that, they'd have to come, I suppose they'd have to come to this office and try to dig out the records.
Um, nothing is going away in, in the town report.
You said it's not, you said it wasn't going to be in the town report. The election results and appropriation results.
The, the, uh, the electoral results from last March, yes, I did take those out. Uh, that to me is just, you know, it's nine months old news.
Now, to your opinion, I still think it's a history.
Uh, is it recorded in any other place?
It's, it's, uh, all the election results are recorded, uh, in, in the clerk's area. It's all, all elections have to be recorded by the clerk. This, this is a repetition. What's included in the town report is the clerk's report on the elections, the certified election results.
Okay.
Right. But, uh, you know, who, who got how many votes last March is not included in this year's report?
Uh, I, yeah, if, if that's correct, yes. I guess it is.
Right.
It's just observations.
Okay.
Okay. Well, good to know. We, we did, uh, at our meeting solicit, uh, many times input about what people wanted and didn't want in the town report. And we, we didn't hear back, so we proceeded as we, as we saw fit. Uh, one of the things to keep in mind is that nowadays, all of that stuff is very easily put on the website and accessible that way.
You know how many people don't have computers?
Well, that's why we're sending out the card. And you certainly are welcome to come in.
Yes.
Come in and get it.
There'll be enough hard, there'll be as many hard copies here as we need. I mean, we're starting at the two-hundred number, because we really don't know what the demand's going to be. Uh, but as soon as I get down to a certain number, I'll just call the printer and say, print me another fifty, or whatever agreement we come to is what's the most...
Well, I agree. I can, I bet you can, I can, I just think about, how many people want?
No, I agree. There's quite a number of people who will want a copy. And that's, we just don't know where to gauge that right now.
But I, I have the internet, but I still like to have something tangible in front of me to, you know, look over. It's just easy, convenient. Yeah.
I'm just curious. The, it's commendable, the amount of time we put in. Has the select board members, uh, stipend changed? Or has that been, it's been five hundred dollars? The auditors, I know you're making a change, and that's there. They're, they're elected officials. The constable is a, I don't know if he's appointed or if he's elected.
He's elected.
There's a change. I mean, auditor, and the lister's is also a change. These are all elected positions. So why not have an E and an F that says, shall the town in, uh, pay, compensate the town treasurer a two-thousand-dollar increase, and shall the town change the town clerk's salary to reflective of what it is? Why, why are those four there? Then, though, they are also in the budget.
Just as our point of order, all these were, are the same as twenty-seventeen.
What's that?
All of these were in the warning for twenty-seventeen.
They're, they're unchanged values.
They're unchanged values. They had to go up last year because the minimum wage went up.
Well, one of the things we've been doing with, with the warning is, um, we've been paring it back also to avoid this double voting thing. And, um, it's, there's really no good reason that we pull out, uh, a few lines of the budget and, and vote on those separately. The, uh, the fact of the matter is, the entire budget is open to debate at, at town meeting. And, uh, any line can be changed. And we also, we actually considered taking all of this out, uh, just because, uh, it's, it's kind of arbitrary that we pick, pick five lines of the budget inside to, to vote on them, on them separately.
If I may, there's another, somewhat of a difference between these three positions here. The selectmen are completely on a different level here, but, uh, those positions have multiple people. In, in the line item in the budget, it just shows a group number, whereas the clerk is an individual and the treasurer is an individual. So you know that what's on the line item in the budget is going directly to that person. Ten fifty an hour is what each lister is making individually. In the budget, it doesn't list each lister by name. It's just, uh, the total amount that's budgeted for salary in that office. So this actually makes that a little more transparent in that they're making ten fifty an hour, whereas the clerk and the treasurer, it's right next to the name and right next to their other benefits.
Uh, any more discussion on the warning?
Need a motion?
I need a motion to approve the warning.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion from Art to approve the warning as circulated, seconded by Ken. Any more discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the warning for town meeting is approved by a vote of four zero zero.
Can you have a copy of that again, Paul?
Uh...
I can have one for you in the morning. A signed copy.
Oh, do I sign it?
Yeah, you have to sign it one, yeah. Uh, the one, I gave you, uh, a copy.
Yep, you did, right here. Uh, item nine is a bullet on town report changes, and we've talked quite a bit about that already. So I don't, I don't think there's anything else to be said there. Is there?
I think I might want to look at it one more time for the, uh, the phone numbers and make sure, uh, because some phone numbers should be in there. Otherwise, a lot of calls will come to Cole Hall that really are handled by other people. But I have to look at that to make sure.
So the, uh, the contact desk page is this right here, which is our main phone number with eight extensions for the various offices, email addresses for the main offices, the website, and mailing address.
Yeah, I think we need to add some more in there. Let me go through the list tomorrow and...
My phone number.
And, and send them in here. Like, like Mert's phone number.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a number that, a few that I think should go back in there, but we can add them in tomorrow.
Phone numbers on every deck and I send out.
Well, the people stole, because I've had people call me asking where your phone number is. And what do I do? I pick up this and look in here and tell them where it is. So...
You want, you want the town garage?
The town garage would be in there, too. Uh, there's a few of them that I think, it wouldn't take up much space, but...
Town garage?
Yeah, people, town garage, yeah. Because people call the garage directly.
Do they?
Yeah.
I never even thought about trying to do that.
Yeah, people call, well, in an emergency, you can never call the town garage, call, you know, but, uh, uh, they do get messages and people even looking, uh, just for general information will look up and see the garage and will leave a message.
It's in the phone book.
Yeah, it's in the phone book.
It's in the phone book, on the shafts.
Yeah, they have a sep, they have a separate number completely. So there were, there's just a few things. Not, not a huge deal, but just a few things I'd like to put back in there.
And again, all of this is on the website.
Yeah.
Your phone number, Mert, is on the website.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, you can't hide. Um, yeah, so, um, you know, let's talk about that tomorrow. I'd like to get this wrapped up as soon as possible and get it...
I was thinking about that when I was, uh, working on the road issues today. So some phone numbers we should probably get back in here. So, uh, I'll have a shortlist tomorrow morning. It won't be, it won't be...
Okay, okay.
And a lot of them, like, you know, the senators and governors' phone...
Yeah, the senators, the governors, the number for A and R, all of that, people can get out of the phone book. We don't need that printed up and, and sent to everybody.
Okay. Uh, see if there's anything else in here that warrants attention. Yeah, yeah, that's, I think that's it for, for the town report. So we'll be, we'll be nailing this down. I'd, I'd like to get this done tomorrow. I've been...
Yes, I think it's...
Spending a lot of my weekends on this.
Yeah.
Yeah, time to get this done. We'll work on, on, uh, the simple wording of the postcard tomorrow, too. So we have the, the mailing pretty much set up, all the cards on Wednesday. We can run those off in no time. Have most of the mailing labels now. The other ones will go to resident, the Shaftesbury on our bulk mailing certificate. And, uh, we'll have them all up on this weekend. And then before we pick the date when the hard copies will be mailed, we can choose the fifteenth, twentieth. After I talk to any spot, I'll figure out.
It'll largely depend on when the printer can have it.
Yeah, so I think we're in good shape. Oh, and just on that topic, just for a second, I, I'm not going out, uh, uh, easily formal like this and people as far away as Burlington for this. We're doing simple, eight and a half by eleven pages.
For?
For the town reports, so, uh, we're just going to do it locally.
For the printer?
For the printer?
Yes.
And if we hit a certain number, it gets to a point, uh, you have to reprint off. If it gets real slow, if someone comes in for copy two oh one, I'll run it off the copy downstairs.
[laughing]
Because we don't want to print up a batch, because what's happened for the last four years is, I still have maybe two-hundred-and-fifty copies of this in boxes in the back of my car waiting to get to the landfill. The post office gave back to me, so, uh, it gets a little expensive to make too many of these. Well, again, they haven't returned.
Thrown out, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what does happen to a certain design, and we all know, is they just go right into the recycling.
Okay. Any other business?
The, uh, the two petitions that were up there, they were, and what was the number that people had to, how many names on the petition for?
It's about a hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
To get onto the ballot.
Yeah, okay.
It's, uh, five percent of the population.
We had to have a hundred and thirty-four. We got a hundred and sixty-six.
Yeah, one thirty-four.
Five percent, isn't it?
Yeah. Okay, I just, but those are the, those are the only two, is that right?
The only two. And we had none of our own articles this year to put in. And last year we had like five of our own to change things, and this year we aren't. But that one is going to take up a lot of room on the ballot. It's going to...
The stall, the energy?
The energy one, yes.
And just a reminder, that is a, uh, non-binding resolution. Uh, if that passes, uh, that does not make us legally bound to keep pollins from changing, adding another diesel tank, for example. Okay. Uh, reviewing action items, going back to, uh, January two, uh, we, we were doing some sliding on the schedule for, uh, the garage and when all that was due. And I know, I've kind of lost a bubble on that, so if you could remind us what those dates are.
Well, yeah, that's, that's all. Now, we did push off the, uh, the final, we will, we see the final bids here on March, gotta get my calendar out. Bring my computer back up for these exact dates. But everything was pushed back a little bit, mainly to give the bidders, uh, more time from the issuance of the package to show up at the mandatory meeting. And so that just pushed everything back a week, essentially, uh, which turned out well for us. We had eight general contractors, uh, at the mandatory meeting and probably fifteen or so suppliers of different types at the meeting. So we had a, for a project this size, we had a very good turnout of unknown builders in the state. So, uh, I think we're moving along pretty well. Next week, we'll have any alternate design packages of due, I believe it's next week. And then there'll be a long break as people do the design part of this product, you know, fleshing out our part of the design. Uh, and then they'll be turned back in here to be, to be evaluated by Goldstone after, whatever. Is that my lock on that? Let me just look at my calendar here.
Well, Dave digs that up. I'll go on down through the list. Uh, we also wanted to be informed about, um, election deadlines. Um, one was the eighteenth for citizens petitions. We got the two that we talked about. The petitions for officers, ballot petitions for officers, and the deadline for, uh, approving the warning were today, uh, the twenty-ninth. And then the, the notice for providing notice of the town plan availability is, uh, February third, thirty days, uh, back from town meeting. The, uh, the, the hard deadline on the town report is ten days. Uh, back before we, we got approval to, to send out notice, it had to be available to people ten days before the meeting. And then tonight, uh, Ken was suggesting that we take a look at our rules for acquiring a new, a new road, make sure that, uh, there are provisions in there that have us take a look at the condition of that road and make sure we're not taking on a, a big money sink when we do that. Um, Dave and I are going to get together and look at adding some of the phone numbers for other officers at town hall, uh, back into the town report. And then, uh, Dave and I will get together and come up with the wording for that postcard to, to be mailed out later on this week on availability of the town report.
Let's make a call in the record.
Okay.
If you give these, didn't get the...
I want to say it was March fifth was...
Well, the bidder, the bids are due March ninth.
March ninth?
Yes.
Is that, is that the opening?
Is that...
That's the opening.
Opening?
That's the opening. And then, and then we...
It'll be awarded later in the month.
Yeah, that's right, because the, we have to make sure that the bid is...
Yeah, because they, we open them here, uh, publicly, and then basically Goldstone will take them and review each package and make recommendations on which would be the best package for us to take up.
If that's not coming quickly, it was mainly for the information of the select board members that we, uh, we wanted to get those deadlines in.
On the wall next to my desk, though.
Okay. Yeah, if you could email that to us tomorrow.
Fortunately, I use two screens downstairs, and this is one screen. Everything meshes together to quickly pull things up.
So I'll leave that as, uh, an action for, uh, to take care of tomorrow. And that just about does it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Moved by Ken.
Second.
Seconded by Art. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.